So, my plan to get around this problem is just to reduce the videos from the office service, but then I get.
Just for, just because it's a bit, I was in plan of being here in the next week, just to let you guys know.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, yeah. Because I got fraternity leave coming up, and so I kind of want to get everything caught up on the ground.
Yeah, no, good for you, good for you, but yeah, no?
Two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
And we'll call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
The minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second.
Okay, call for a vote on the minutes.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Discuss and approve EMS claim, gentlemen, team now.
I have, yes.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
Questions again.
I'll make a motion to approve the EMS claims.
I will second.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
I may list them out individually, like I do the ARPA, since we started that policy.
Okay.
If you want to just run through it, I have the list, I can add to it, but just remember just to be transparent with what we're doing.
We can handle that. Uh, I'll probably butcher some of the names, but Clockies Emergency Vehicle, that was for North Bend Ambulance, for two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and thirty-four, thirty-five dollars. Chase Decals for EMS, Blarstown Tahoe Decals, two thousand, sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Stryker Sales LLC, Norway Medical Supplies, seventeen thousand, one hundred. Bell Plain Area Ambulance, twelve hundred, oh, excuse me, one thousand, one hundred, twenty dollars and forty-two cents. Urbana Pope Township Fire Department EMS. Urbana First Responders Vehicle, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, ninety-eight cents. Bell Plain Area Ambulance EMS, Bell Plain Ambulance, two hundred and sixteen dollars, fifteen cents. Norway Area Firefighters EMS, Norway First Responders, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh, Carl Chevrolet Incorporated EMS, Blarstown Tahoe, seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred, forty-seven and seventy-four cents. Bell Plain Area Ambulance, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-two cents, which is a grand total of three hundred and three thousand, five hundred and thirty-five cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vacation carryover.
Yep.
Two of them.
There's two.
Rick and Grace.
Yep.
She's only got three hours left.
Yeah. I would move to carry the vacation time award for Grace.
I'll second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
And I would suggest we don't need to put actually a timeline to be used since it's only three hours.
Yeah.
You guys agree?
Yeah, fine, so.
Okay, and then we got Rick Wood.
I would also move to approve the vacation carryover for Rick Wood. Do you want to put a timeline on that one?
How many hours was his?
Eighty.
Eighty, pretty substantial. It's two weeks.
That's the most used carryover he's had.
Was it an anniversary date?
It already is, I think that's what he's had.
And a half?
Yeah, yep. Usually you do like three, three months probably, and typically, unless they say they have specific reasons why they're using it.
How many weeks does he get?
He probably is at the three weeks, I think, for his time longevity.
Five weeks and next year.
Just to be sure.
I'm going to say four.
Four?
Yeah, he gets eighty.
From his anniversary date?
He gets, uh, three weeks, and his anniversary date is July twenty-eighth.
Oh, sorry, this one.
Yeah, yesterday.
End of November, I thought.
End of November.
Yeah, December comes around, you'll have the sidewalks.
It'll be busy again.
Yeah.
So he's going to have a downtime or something, something down there. I'm good with four months.
I'll do the four months.
Okay, somebody want to put it in motion?
You had a motion, so you want to amend that?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to amend this, to approve Rick's vacation carryover, and give him four months to use the carryover time off.
I'll second that.
All right, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Okay, number seven, I don't know what you kind of handled that, Haley.
Oh, yep, so that is through Iowa State Association of Counties, which we call ISAC. So every affiliate usually has voting rights, so like when you're voting on your legislative priorities and things like that. So what this is, is just an updated resolution telling ISAC who we authorize for those departments to make those, to participating in the voting, because some of it can be done online, some of it's at your affiliate meetings and such, so like the sheriff, individuals. It's just kind of, we haven't done one in a while, so they asked us to update it.
Okay. Would you able to understand that then?
Yes.
And I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five sixty-one, Iowa State Association of County delegate representatives.
I would make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five sixty-one to designate voting representatives for the Iowa State Association of Counties.
I'll second.
Do we read these offer?
No, you don't have to. It's basically, this department has our elected officials that participate.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
And then number eight, that is that resolution that we discussed last week, the gifting and ten percent match or loaning from the lost funds, so Derek did a great job of revising that. We're going to repeal those old ones, and it's basically most of the same language, other than referring to when EMS trust fund money is utilized, so.
Well, and any other type of fund money where, you know, it's got that constant string. I, I try to make, I made it like it's paragraph ten, where, um, it encapsulates generally what, uh, the concerns were, the way I interpreted it from y'all, so. And Haley gave the thumbs up, and so if there's anything to change, I can surely do that.
It's cleaner to do one new one instead of all those old pending ones.
Yeah, and it's essentially just cop, I don't know, like copy and paste it, and all those other changes that were made throughout the last ten years, and it's just essentially you're adopting the same thing, it's just fresher, so, within the record.
If you recall, that's how you were able to loan the Fremont Township funds and stuff like that.
Okay. So can I get a motion to, you're approved, we're denying the Resolution number twenty-five sixty-two?
I would make a motion.
Discussion on the motion, please.
Yes.
I got a question, you got it listed down here as, uh, the local auction sales tax, hand service tax, given one hundred and ten to now, local auction sales tax, I'm kind of trying to understand, you're loaning money, on the back end, I get all that, what's this local auction sales tax?
That was passed by the voters back in?
Oh, eight.
Yep, two thousand and eight, so that's like the, goes through the state, so it's not on your income, it's not on your property taxes, that money comes from the state with revenues, so like whatever was sold in Iowa like prior month, then we get a check the next month, if it's in Benton County, all the sales tax.
Okay, yeah, it's fluctuates, it's not like set in stone like property tax and whatnot for the year, so like, you know, if business was great in July, but not in August, you know.
But on the ballot, it had specific language, like twenty-five percent had to use towards tax relief, seventy-five percent like divided up between secondary roads, conservation, our libraries, et cetera, so it's specific uses.
All right.
But, but our spending authority changes, obviously, because we have to have what's in that fund balance for the future year. So like during COVID, obviously, people weren't out doing as much shopping, you could see the fluctuations.
Okay. All right, thanks. There you go. Motion on the floor, so.
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Do.
Um, I should only use, need one for that.
Just one?
It's employee related, I need two.
Discuss and approve hiring Cheyenne Packer, full-time communication specialist sheriff.
She's a replacement for Paige, just resigned.
I would make the motion to approve Cheyenne Packer for employment as communication specialist with the sheriff.
I'll second.
My resolution.
Yeah. My resolution, so Resolution twenty-five sixty-three, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Grace, aye.
Yeah.
I saw one, two on that one, because of these employer related.
Yep, can I give, the department had one, we keep one.
Did you sign your other one, Ron?
Yes.
Will that other one do initial to, for Grace? Oh, you'll give it to me later.
Let's see, you got another one?
Yep.
You got that one? I bet she's got that in her pocket.
Yeah.
That's not used to.
Oh, that's for the next one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a copy of that.
All right, next on their agenda is fireworks permit for Karen Peterson, Atkins, Lewinberry Farm.
I have a question on this one, the date that this is going to take place?
For the second?
It's not filled in on the form.
Date of display?
Date of display.
August second. It just didn't have aerial salutes, because that's seven.
Oh, so the aerial salutes is the same day?
I would say so.
Okay. It keeps up, it won't have to worry about being dry. Oh, boy.
Yeah. And the fire chief already signed off on it.
Do you see that second page is missing, so if you want to just sign at the bottom?
I'd make a motion to accept the fireworks permit for Karen Peterson for August second?
I'll second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
I had two meetings last week, uh, first one, we're, I'm still attending the, uh, mental health region meetings, because it's still open, because we have payments, the money is coming from the state, from the district, to the region to complete the payments. Uh, I know last week Haley and I had to touch base on the vehicles.
Got all that taken care of.
So it's all taken care of.
Titles, I tried, I, the Jeep Renegade is in Buchanan County parking lot, I found the title, um, and then we have two Dodge Journeys out here, the one from the hub we keep, it's ours, but that one's dead, needs a new battery or something, I mean, it won't even hold a charge. But I mailed the titles to that Don at the region, and then once they get the new titles, they'll come take possession, and I'll get those off our insurance. Right now, I left insurance on it, since they're.
Still here.
Yep.
So the one we keep is going to have a battery?
Yeah.
Of course it's working.
Yeah, so I guess, I don't know what you guys want to do with that one, it's just sitting out there right now. That one was in two thousand fourteen, the other one was in nineteen.
And the nineteen's the one they're getting?
Yep. It only had twenty-six thousand miles on it.
Yeah.
Yep, we did that, and then I know, um, I sent reports to Deb Guard for the accruals to get all current, like he said, from the last fiscal year, and then now going forward, we're doing monthly, instead of quarterly, so we'll have that revenue upfront to pay out, like for Sarah's wages and stuff, so.
And that's going to be from one county then, right?
Well, it's from the East Central, whatever the region number is now, yeah. Hopefully, we got it figured out, right, Ray, where all those other billings and stuff were going, so.
Yeah.
It was just.
We had a lot of kids placed recently.
Yeah.
Derek and Ray, you got a copy of the MOU that you sent out last week?
Sure, sure did, um, which was appreciative, because that was kind of a.
I have a copy here on the one.
Okay, good.
Yep, I have it signed.
You had, you had it too, okay, yeah.
Okay, you got one copy.
Yep, and then I think we have all of our contact people now, they're starting to communicate, so I think last week was just good to get it out in the open, we needed some communication, so.
Good.
No, I was out of town last week, so. So my other meeting was, uh, detention in Eldora, um, that's big business.
Are they all cut up now, because we're still?
We're occupying more space over there than we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, at one point, we had four kids working there last month.
Yeah, you'll see a lot of those claims next claim run, because we're getting itemized ones like for like the nurse visits, and then we'll get like their stays, so they're itemizing them separately now, so.
That's the same group that last year just gave us a blank.
Central Iowa.
So they're sure they're doing it right?
Yeah, they're really invoicing, and they're doing it basically within days of their services, we're getting invoices.
Okay, that's how it should be.
Right.
Because that's why we had an issue in the first place, is because what the heck are we paying for, and so I think they kind of understood, and I feel like that's a reasonable ask.
And we have Luke double-checked, because I don't know the, the names of the minors that were sent, so I have cross-checking going on before I just pay it, so.
And they aren't communicating with Luke at the juvenile court if there is anything special going on with somebody we have there, so we'll know that the rates are going to be higher?
Yeah. Still unfortunate from that unfunded mandate, so, but hopefully, there's just no big surprises this year.
Good. That was the, that was the big goal.
Yeah, you're getting twenty-six thousand dollar bills at once.
I'd be like, oh.
Yeah.
They have three months by a week, I just did a lot of investigating on different problems in the county, so.
I certified the tax list to the treasurer, so, I mean, if anybody could see the tax amount owed on the, our real estate and stuff, and Melinda's got them sent to the mailer, so, just so you know, that's why I gave you the levy sheets.
One other thing, the animal shelter, uh, hearing is on this Friday, so we anticipate having that wrapped up pretty quickly.
Yeah, that's good, Ray.
We should keep it for our dog. Just a thought there.
The timing.
The timing on that.
Yeah.
All right, nine twenty-five, AR, Vester.
Yep.
Land Use Health Department, possible closed session?
Yes.
Would you like to go into closed session?
Yes.
Gentlemen, can I have a motion go into closed session?
Okay.
Someone's calling.
Set the green.
Board of Supervisors.
Hi, this is Amy Grunwald, and I am the Director of D cap for Benton on Iowa County, and we need, um, to either have a meeting or something with the Board of Supervisors, because we need to have a Benton County Supervisor on the D cap board, and we currently do not with the changes in election, so wondering if I can either set up meetings to see which one would be interested, um, in joining the board, but the only way Benton County can receive D cap funds is if there is a Supervisor on the board, so hoping to have a conversation with somebody.
Didn't that, is this a new program, because I know it ended prior, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it's not new, D cap has been, has been going on for, I mean, since over twenty years, and we had a Board of Supervisor from Benton County on the, the board, but with the election changes, we no longer have anyone from Benton County, so just trying to see who I can potentially talk to that may be interested.
How often does it meet?
Uh, meetings once a month.
Meetings are once a month, they're always online, so they're virtual, um, and, uh, I can provide, you know, information about how much Benton Iowa gets, but basically, that board decides on where the money goes in Benton and Iowa, um, all the state funds come through my office, and then we work with the board on how to, um, how to spend those dollars within Benton and Iowa counties.
Okay, why don't we have you contact the auditor, and?
Okay.
She'll get everything put on the agenda, and we'll get this taken care of.
Awesome. Um, can you tell me who your auditor is?
Our auditor is Haley Ruppel, and her, her phone number is three one nine, four seven two, two three six five.
Perfect, I will get ahold of Haley, and we'll go from there.
Why don't you give her, she's at the board meeting with us, so she'll be in after lunch today, one o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds great, thank you so much, appreciate it, take care.
Bye-bye.
Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
I will make a motion to go into closed session, under Iowa Code twenty-one point five, subsection one, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless or irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and the individual requests a closed session.
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye. And then, of course, you got to make your, the motion on action were taken? I'd like to make a motion to give verbal warning, take no other actions, bar fetches evaluation.
I'll second that motion.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye. Do you guys need me for anything else, because I got to get you guys.
Why, I have a couple questions, I know where you're going with or anything, or I don't really know much else to say, I just am curious on, among what is there standing on outside council to help, right, when we vote for litigation, since the board of health, where do I go to find that information?
So are you talking about like, uh?
It's like authorities to come in and help.
Um, it would, it would be public record, I'm assuming, um, because like, there's some things that were conflicted out regardless, so like, that's why we have the Heartland the way it is?
Insurance, yeah.
Correct, because they, they supply, they pay for them, all that, it's, the special situations where, like if, I don't know, would be a good example, because I want to make, so it's just like, if there's something where it pits us as odds with our ethical duties, per like whether that's our job duties or representation, that's where that comes into play.
So I would just go auditor's office?
Probably, yeah.
Find out, get those numbers, or figure out?
Yeah.
Would that be just a basic number for all of them, so that I have to try to figure out if they would say anything like Heartland or Dexter or whatever?
Uh, we would, like, we publish the claim vendor every time, it's always in the paper, so if it's outside legal.
Bring a moment to.
Yeah, wait.
And then, of course, you gotta make your, the motion on action were taken?
I'd like to make a motion to give verbal warning and take no other action on R. Bestur's evaluation. I'll second that motion.
Well, verbal.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's, aye.
Do you guys need me for anything else? Because I get, you got a bit of.
Well, I got a couple questions. I know where you're going with or anything, or I thought maybe Ray would still say. I just am curious on, how much money are we spending on outside council to help Ray? Will you vote for litigation since the Board of Health? Where do I go to find that information?
So are you talking about like, uh?
Outside attorneys to come in and help?
Um, it would probably, it would be public record, I'm assuming. Um, because like, uh, there's some things that were conflicted out regardless. So like, that's why we have the Hartland, the way it is?
Insurance, yeah.
Correct, because they, they supply, they pay for them, all that. It's the special situations where, like if, I don't know, would be a good example because I want to make, so it's just like, if there's something where it pits us as odds with our ethical duties, per like whether that's our job duties or representation, that's where that comes into play.
So I would just go auditor's office and find out to get those numbers or figure it out?
Yeah.
Would that be just a basic number for all of them so that I have to try to figure out if they would say anything like Hartland or Dexter or whoever?
Yeah, we would, like, we publish the claim vendor every time. It's always in the paper. So if it's outside legal, if it comes out of the attorney's office, if it comes from the board, et cetera, it'll.
Okay.
It'll be different line items relating back to where it come out.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, just like the numbers. I'm, I just had something pop into my head the other day, and I was like, well, I kind of curious how much over and above we're paying Ray, and then we're getting, paying for outside council for stuff and everything else. I'm thinking, you're worried about money, and the county's worried about money, and I'm thinking, well.
Yeah, and, and some of those are just very tough for us because like, then our license is at stake. You know, say if we did something, and, and that's a very expensive license. And, and there's reasons why we have those ethical duties, you know, so then we're not breaching the trust. Is, is the main idea. So, does that help?
Yep, yep. You gave me a direction.
All right, you bet. All right, see you for those.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Any comments?
Doing old business?
Oh, well, some, something else I was curious of. Um, in the live wire notes, we paying for, uh, the city, some different cities, uh, utility bills. What's that all about?
Streetlights.
Oh, that's what that is?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know what that was for. I just was going through it and I saw that.
Streetlights, and then I believe like, uh, secondary roads, they pay the city of New Hall for the town shed down there when it keeps a maintainer. Most of these towns that have a maintainer in. Blairstown, the maintainer's outside in the, in the country, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Keystone's outside in the country. Mount Auburn's outside in the country. But like New Hall has a meter, uh, on that building, and I believe that when they read it, it gets billed to the city. I'm not positive on that, but I do know like the streetlights along Highway thirty. Watkins, for instance, uh, down there. Luzern's another one that gets billed to the county, and then the county turns around and pays the town. Or Watkins, that, that's the one I've been dealing with the last couple of years, so I know quite a bit about it. So anyway, uh, the bank gets the bill for all the streetlights in Watkins. And then turn around, the bank usually, I don't know if they do it every six months or quarter, but they send the total bill for them three months, four months, whatever it is, to Myron. It gets on the registry, and then we pay the, the bank in Watkins for the streetlights.
Yeah, because I was just looking, I saw that, you know, paying the city for the city, and I was like, wait a minute, what the hell?
And there might also be on occasion, um, if a person qualifies for assistance through like our VA or general assistance, we assist in bills and stuff, so there could be somebody's utility bill.
Hey, the Ray.
Just depends on the scenario.
You'll, you'll see other bills pop up, uh, at our nine-one-one locations, at our tower sites.
Yeah.
We've got power. And not only they have power, they all have generators. They run twenty-four seven.
Okay, I was just curious. I thought, well, why wasn't the city paying their own utilities? Because it was listed as utilities, but I get it because it was electricity, but for the streetlights.
Yeah.
And how about the billings?
The streetlights, you know, like on Highway thirty, you know that.
Yeah. Yeah.
You don't see a meter down there, so I guess, yeah, that was one of my questions I had. They kind of give a flat free. How many lights you got, and this is what you pay them up.
Gotcha. And I know it didn't come up to a ton. It wasn't a ton, but it was just, I was just curious because they were listing it, so.
Lot of aspects. You can sit in this chair sometime. Well, that's why I'm gonna ask the questions. Okay.
Was the light put in down on thirty, on the stop sign?
No.
That hasn't been put in?
I'm dealing with that right now. No, not yet.
I just wondered if it helped and that.
I've been dealing with the state last week.
So nothing has been done with the rumble strips or have.
Nothing, no, no. Like I said, I dealt with the state last Thursday morning. If they're true to the word, things will start moving faster than the last twelve months. So, but I, you know, government moves slow, and I'm not one for moving slow, so if people know me, you know. I'm working as hard as I can to, all right?
I just wondered. I just wondered if there, and if that was filled in, if there was a difference.
Nope, nope, they haven't been filled in at all. I'm working on it. All right.
It's been how many months?
Twelve. Motion to adjourn, gentlemen. You think so?
I'll make the, make the motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.